Sony Board of Appeals Chairman is not here tonight, so good chairman's next meeting. And we are expecting Lynn, but she's not here. So we have four, just to begin. The we have one of the second item on our hearing list is request for continuance. So I suggest we take that up first and get that out of the way. And there's a request A Jefferson Court to continue their variance request. Until what day? Six, six twenty five, okay. And as far as attendance goes, we now have Lynn Scap. We now have five full voting members. Anyway, we were talking about handling the continuance request for A Jefferson Court. Up until the day until June twenty fifth. Is there somebody here to talk on behalf of it?
I'll make that motion to continue variance for A Jefferson Court, variant hearing for A Jefferson Court. To the meeting of June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Motion has been made and seconded. Soon there's no discussion, so we'll just go down the table here. It's indicate yes or no, Mr. Val. Also, yes, that's five in permanent admitted unit. I should also indicate to the audience here that ultimate attendance is the C Planner, Kate Sullivan. And joining us remotely tonight is our minute taker, Gretchen, who is. Out there. Alright, so that gets us to our hearings. The first hearing is sixteen fifty fourth street. And the way the process works here is that someone will make a presentation on behalf of the applicant or themselves will make it. Then we will throw it open for comments, questions from anyone here or online. Then the board will ask its questions. And then we will deliberate and we will vote. So please introduce yourself for the our minute taker.
Thank you. My name is Chris Prong, SCDC Design. I'm here representing my client. And homeowner Susan Harvey at sixteen fifty fourth street. And we are here tonight in regards to asking for additional footprint and a change of pipe. For the existing structure, the property. So if you look at the snap here, quickly, I guess so, it's this one tiny little yellow. Area right down here in the edge of the city line. Here are some existing photos. This is the front right view of the property, of existing structure. And this is the from the front left. Structure and more. Basically, a quick summation of what we have, we can just go back two slides. There are two shed dormers on the existing second floor. We're going to be looking to extend those shed dormers. Same pipe all the way to the left side of the gable, one slide four. So those shed doors come straight back into the other gable at the end of the house. We're not increasing the footprint of the second floor, we're simply just gaining more ceiling height. And furniture space on that, on that second floor. There is a bedroom up there, the existing shed dormer is an existing bathroom. And so we're just simply extending that. The second part of this construction phase is. This exists on the first floor, those four windows that you see in front of you, we'd like to extend that out. Five point five each inches to exactly where this railing is. So this whole facade right here would extend out to this railing. So it's five, five point five inch two inches. And then we would take off the roof here and change, have this roof line right here come out and wrap around side. All the way around the side, making it more of a continuous roof lines than all these different jobs and so forth, the device that are there now. So in, in the structural plans, we'll be adding one hundred and sixteen square feet to the first floor. And the next slides. So here's the proposed site that we have. Again, this is the addition, right, the existing structure right here, there's a deck right, the existing deck and existing deck here. This is the small footprint that we're looking to add the first floor. Existing, so there are two, one step down, one step difference between two levels on the first floor. The existing lower portion of that floor is the bottom of the joists are four inches into the design flood zone. So what we're going to do is put new floor joists over the existing. Floor joints, which will then push the floor joists up above the design flood plain. So it'd be legal and adhere to the flood plain's criteria. And that's pretty much most of what's going on here. The next slide. So here you can see, this is the floor plan, first floor plan. Existing living room here, we're gonna keep that same level right here. And extend it out, right here is the line of the existing exterior wall. So this is the extension of that room. And then step down into the existing kitchen right here. So the new construction, according to the code requirements, so by us, any new construction has to be above the design flood plain. Which is what we're, we were doing for the new addition. Next slide. And then on the second floor. This is the existing second floor, where we're rebuilding the stairs and so forth, in order to get the head height, be able to bring the stair up. And create a solid, the master, the master bedroom upstairs. So right, right here is the line of the existing shed dormer. Out to the front, we'll be extending this shed dormer now, so we can. This whole master bedroom and stair area. This is just a proposed application, so you can see, again, this is the existing shed dormer here. Standing the exact same shed dormer and the beam line and roof, roof line of the existing. To the end of the gable, and this will be the new roof line being proposed with the windows. You know, they may change the, the actual windows, sizes of these windows, but nonetheless, the actual footprint and roof line of this, of this whole facade. Will be modified to match and wrap around from the side of the house around the front. Give it a little bit more cleaner look on the roof. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much. Alright, the next part of our public hearing. Here in the audience who would like to make a comment. For opportunity to say something in favor, against, question, or whatever. If you may like to comment. Okay, the next we look to anybody who might be out there in line. So that gets us to the questions from the board. Which of our four members here would like to begin tonight quickly?
I'll start. I just got a couple. The total increase in square footage is just one sixteen, what's happening in there? There's no change upstairs because you're just changing the roof height. And then you notice on the drawings, there's no right side here. There's, there's no look at the right side. There's no change. You wouldn't see any, except the roof line change on. I guess this front elevation, small, you would see that coming, the whole length of the roof.
So this is the shed dormer right here is there, and then stop right there.
Yeah.
And then there's a roof height, this is all roof height now. So we're just extending that existing roof all the way down to the end of the gable.
Yep.
And this roof line right here will be raised to match the, the roof lines on the.
So if I was standing on the right side of the house, looked at the house, I wouldn't really see much of a change.
No.
Cause those roofs are going away from me.
Exactly.
Same thing with the rear, I really wouldn't see.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I said a couple of questions. Not part of the presentation, but in your material, you have the zoning matrix. And there were a couple of notes in there and they just had some different values in that note column. And those numbers are just the increase.
The differential.
Yeah, where you're going from to where you will be. And just to, to speak to the, the F A R. You guys are so far near the F A R that it's really not even an issue here.
I have no question.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, so you went to the historic commission and they said the structure was not historically significant?
Correct, because there have been so many additions and add-ons, you cannot really even see the original structure that's there now. We just last week got approval from conservation. So this is our last.
Right, I, I don't have any question. So now we move on to deliberations where each member will. Indicate whether this, whether they support this and you light up the guidelines that. This is the origins of this, we can follow. So who would like to begin?
Oh, I can support that. The, the overall changes. Planning to me. Changes to the appliance.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I agree with Mr. Bennet. Support this application, there's no new non-conformity and there's nothing here that is. Substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Agree, the other two-pronged approach for. For this, we also have to. Make sure that there's nothing that would be ten feet. Around the lot line. No more than two stories, no more than thirty feet. Neither one of those are current. And this is, Bennet said it's quite a modest position and. As far as, you know, lot coverage and fire, probably one of the best ones we've seen coming from us so far. So I, I can approve this application.
I would concur with all of my colleagues.
And I too concur with my colleagues. Cause usually large lot. Pretty location. So without we move to a motion or vote, make motion.
I'll second.
It's removed and seconded. Anybody else want to make a comment? Okay. Mr. Val.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, next topic, we've already continued the Jefferson Court. Second Harding Avenue, so for non-conformities. So introduce yourself and any of the ultimate partner team.
So as I've said, the, the property address is second Harding Ave. On the left is a property plan for the neighborhood. On the right is the site area, they could be a field with the scale of the neighborhood. And you'll notice particularly on the one on the left, we just showed the link, it's again the lot side of the. There's a house close to the street and then there's a garage, which is that smaller volume. Low on the left, and you can see on the right as well, there's quite a few newer buildings on the street that are, you know. Through scale that are. And existing footprint is thirteen sixty eight square feet, we're looking to do an addition. That would be comprised of a larger living room and ground floor with kitchen. And then new primary suite upstairs, so make it into a four bedroom house. That more living spaces than just. Zoning district is R two, we're not in any overlay districts. And another interesting thing about the house that went into our proposal, it was built in nineteen thirty. But there's a rear addition that was added in two thousand twelve. Really kind of band-aid, it's not the sort of holistic addition that, that we're seeking to do now. If you look at the set plan, the area, it's that little knob that's off. The success photos. But our proposals take off that twenty twelve small addition on the rear and add a larger new addition. The reason that we're presenting before you is that existing law is not good. And the addition that we're proposing as well. These are photographs of the existing house from the four different angles. The upper left is looking from Harding Ave, a little bit skewed to the left, I couldn't get any further because the. The property line is just right there, this thick vegetation against it, but it gives you a sense of. How close from the left, from the upper right is from the front. Edge, you can see the driveway. Which blinds the house as well as the. The lower left is from the back left side of the rear garden. And that volume in the foreground that's there, the whole house is the twenty twelve addition that we're proposing to move. The last one, lower right, it's from the rear right side. Also, that whole foreground volume, that's the roof and the ground story and then a full volume. So on the right hand side is our proposed plot plan from the simple engineer, on the left are the, the numbers from the zoning matrix to. To show you how this all adds up. So starting the site plan on the right, that you can see again the knob that's off of the rear of the existing footprint, that's going to be removed. And then, yeah, thank you. And then just behind that, it's an addition, that's the proposed footprint. The addition, and you'll notice that we're staying within. Increasing any of the non-conformities, the existing house does transcend both the left and the front. Second plan, but we're not increasing on keeping our new footprint. On the left side, I just highlighted the existing non-conforming components and showed here not. These are views of both before and after in three dimensions, showing number folks addition, so the left column is before, the right column is after. Top row from the front right, so it shows to the garage. The foreground right there, and then on the left you can see that addition in the distance, twenty twelve addition, and it's replaced with our volume. The big thing that we're doing is setting it back on both edges, the left side we have to, to meet the setback line, the right side to set it back. One foot would differentiate the nineteen thirty historic volume from the new addition. We have a similar scale established with the E, which is just slightly higher ours compared to the right. Eight inches or so. And then we have a new. Small roof cover for second, so when you park in the garage. Currently you enter underneath that. Bottom row are the left views, which can't really see currently because of the vegetation, but you see how far setback the addition is, even if the trees are cleared. But you don't see the addition all that much. These two views show you a little bit more, you know, three dimensionally what we're talking about. So again, left is existing, right. And starting with the top row, you can see how that knob on the rear, twenty twelve was taken out. Cable volume, again, ground floor program is the kitchen and. Or public space for the growing family, and then the upper part is a new primary suite. Bathroom. And next I have all four elevation showing you the existing versus proposed. Starting with the prime, the top of these. There, there's no change effectively, in the, in this full front view, you can see the roof line in the distance. But effectively from the street, you don't see that. Our new roof line is four feet higher than the existing. We apply that just by nature of having enough item in the spaces. Yeah, be comfortable in here, existing house from nineteen thirty is extremely short. This is the right view, at the top slide at the dash line, it shows you where nineteen thirty to twenty twelve is. That line will be removed, the bottom slide, the addition to the rear. There's one room, one window that's a little bit larger on the additions, and right after the nineteen thirty addition, that's for an existing bedroom. Secondary egress and that bedroom. This is the rear of the house, you can see this, the overall competition doesn't change much, but the existing. Addition to the street, that's in this newer gable. Lastly, we have the, this is the right left side. Understood the street direction and twenty twelve addition being removed, and then the, the addition below. So it's the side that's plus the fence mostly have small windows there to. So lastly, just in summary, these were the four questions that we did along with the application, just to. To recap, so the single family detached house in R two, and we're not proposing any changes of use. We do not conform to the lottery, front side back. But we're not exacerbating or intensifying any of those boards. Those addition. And then lastly. Just some numbers and sort of why, why the homeowner would like to do this, why I think it makes sense. It's a nine hundred and twenty gross square foot addition to a thirteen hundred and sixty eight square foot house on a street that has. A lot of houses close to eight thousand square feet, frankly. So it's the modest addition to make this house livable for the long run for our family. And we set back the volume very intentionally on both of the sides to create a. To keep the scale of the structure consistent on the street by the limits. It's a period from public domain. And we comply with all the, the. With the additions. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. I was gonna reach, also introduce himself as the homeowner, and I was gonna speak to the outreach that he's done today.
Hi, thank you for your time, Joel Ari of Southern Harding. There with my wife, Mina. One of the reasons why they're here is. Our relationship with, with our neighbors. Behind us and in front of us, left and right, they've all been fantastic. We moved in in September of twenty twenty one, it's been a warm welcome. Everybody's taking care of each other and some of them long-term. So we have reached out to all the neighbors individually, had some over. Designs, layouts, plans. What the phase would entail along the run.
Okay, thank you very much. Includes your presentation, then we'll go on to the comment. So we'll now open the public comment period, for anybody here in the room who would like to make a comment. If you would, just raise your hand. You probably call or ask questions. Is there anyone online who would like to raise their hand, there's someone online. Minute taker. Planner, so. Let's get back to, so that gets us to questions from the board. Who would like to begin?
I'll start. I don't really have any. Real big questions. The, the one question though that I did have for you was. What's the space between the existing garage and the proposed addition? I couldn't make that out from the plans. In terms of the dimension or the use?
Yeah, the, the dimension.
It's the same as it currently is, but the existing twenty twelve. Yeah, that's all that's really the question.
I've got a couple. If you presented, but you answered all, all my questions. It's hard to see on the drawing, but is the new roof on feet below twenty four feet, existing house is twenty?
Could you go to that slide? Yeah, actually, any of these really. All, all on the left.
Twenty four and quarter. It was twenty, okay. And then the rear wood extension of new building, are you taking off? No. Couldn't figure out, well, I, I could do it if I knew the size of the note. The new building is twenty eight feet six inches off of the old dwelling. Trying to ascertain how big the extension is beyond the existing note. Just to get an idea of scale and mass. It's big in your pictures, but it may only be eighteen feet, I don't know.
Yeah.
And how big the numbers? Okay.
And the upstairs.
Alright, so the, the extension's around twenty to twenty two feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that. Does any impression of largeness and big things existing house?
It's so small, you know, and you have one of the smallest lots in the neighborhood when you look at the maps.
And we worked with the sibling here very closely to keep all within all that restriction, that open space and lot coverage.
Yeah. And the trees to the left are so massive, you won't even see this addition. You got some big, big trees back there.
Yeah.
Now, I, I like the way you kept it within the boundaries, it's, it's tastefully done. Thank you, no more questions.
Miss Scow, Mr. Bennet?
Just, just.
I don't really have any, any questions, I appreciate that was a good presentation and I appreciate that. Note that there's also several letters from the voters inside.
In that case, just one other question, as, as I'm looking at photos. At the aerial photograph, did you go to that? Yeah. It's large structure too. As you're. Walking into your front.
See, Caitlin, I'm sure you could use the pointer to.
Oh, not, not your property, one, the adjacent property.
That's the. For the smaller one. We can hope to, to, to.
Understand the, the scale of your. And then on the other side.
Yep. You probably know the details, that's one of the neighbors in that one. It's one of the two buildings.
Yes, in the garage. Lower right or?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just trying to get this.
Alright, um, I don't have any additional questions, so we'll go on to deliberations. Um, when we do our deliberations, we should indicate what what the guidelines are and what, what our findings are. In the table, into our plan, our rulings. So, uh, who would like to begin?
I can start again, so. I guess number one, I don't, there's no new non-conformity. Based on issued and I don't think it's substantially more detrimental. It is big. Existing house, scaling, but um, it's so small to start with. It's, it's just barely catching up to some of the houses around it. I think the smallest house is one of the best street with the pool. It's a small cape, right? But everything else is, is, the skies are bigger. So I can't fault it per scale and mass. Because starting at such a small so I can support.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Shannon, who else would like to speak?
I'm good. The existing is thirteen hundred square feet, right? Uh, yeah, so. So I think that there's really no problem here for this application, um, there's no new non-conformity. And we're looking at it under section ninety two A. That's no new non-conformity and there's nothing here that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the here. You consider it, Mr. Check, you know, the speaking of massing and the, the scale. Even though this is a larger addition and stuff. Be troubling in this neighborhood, so I'm in favor.
Thank you. You got, I mean, there's no new, not no application of that existing. All said and done, you have an absolute point three of being, which is certainly not in this neighborhood, it's a large addition. It fits on the lot. It needs lot coverage and open space requirements. All of that. In positions.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Guy.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues and then also noting that you have to support your neighbors to demonstrate that it's substantial.
Uh, thank you, and, and I, I concur with my colleagues, um. You know, I first thought the condition, because there are a lot of little smaller houses on the street, but it is a mixed street and you did try to tuck it the sides and yelling kind of peeks over the top of the kids. I can support this. Shouldn't, shouldn't invest a buck. Um, so with that, we need a, uh, motion.
I'd like a motion to approve the special permit for non-conformity for seven.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Um, on the line. Kyle, yes.
Yeah.
Shannon, yes.
Yes.
Okay, five unanimous, it is, thank you very much.
Thank you. Actually, appreciate it.
Alright, that gets us to our third and final hearing to be. Um, which is a, uh, the variance. Five block by next street. And who would like to present this, if you could introduce yourself, name and address, you have a
John Laplante. To the overview of along Lafayette Street in yellow. There's the building. And you can see the tree system all the way up. Lot median. Half gene. These are probably the inconsistent. We go to the next. So shows the back of the street lining up. And the right hand side. See better. The addition, you see just to make a very small house. It was built in nineteen fifty. Basically, it was for two people. Two small bedrooms upstairs, one room, which we're going to do in. Sitting so long on the ground floor. See the floor plan shows what we can move from. Kitchen, rear. What we'd like to do is add an addition on you playing thing, a small addition that's used. Certainly, to get into the house, you need to get to the front or to the back, you know. Slope. The backyard, well, three feet higher, all the way around the building into where we have a secondary staircase now. In that case, we have both I think it's convenient to come into. And what we're doing is opening up give house a certain larger scale. Larger level. For four foot four. Leave on the back, we can see what we mentioned. Standing into the rear. One. This lot is half the size, you know. Zoning. Two matrix. One uh, for the zoning matrix, if you bump on those two. One on the left basically demonstrates that we have a non-conforming word, let's say A. It's the sound back. Matrix on the right shows system in context to rest of the unit. One that you see blind are basically the lots that have been purchased fifty years ago, right? Maybe able to do a lot of more. Addition off the rear, you see here. This is existing staircase going up, left is one on the right. Those abandoned. That we were still maintaining. Also requesting a bulk area. Certain zoning. So all fifth, it seems to be addressing issue that we can take that off, be very convenient and can't see it from the street. Low profile. Front of the building. Change to the street side and that you're going to see the new entryway coming down in. And because the rear vision is a little bit wider, still needs a setback. You won't see the vision. On the parking lots. See the entryway. Room and the rest of the house, which is the same. The national changes there. Small addition of seventy one feet. Team were a mission of less than five hundred. In terms of the building staying thing, we gave you both. Zoning type of competition, which is the same as what so. We're showing you in context that here it's like not going anywhere near. Be with you. Addition intentionally to stay one story, so rear. hallway and outside, none of those windows don't change. So that when you're standing in the kitchen and looking stepping down into the living room, three steps, lowering to the grade. Couple of feet. Also, we took, have used the dining room. We do have a previous design that had a doorway basically coming off the back. We couldn't back doorway up, go through that. Yes. This, this is, you can see where we have the stairs coming close to the rear. We're talking to the planning department. I'm personally viewing this. Didn't want to call that a deck. Doesn't need to be a deck. Took it off. All the setback here. Return it to where it exists. This is the, this is the plan, preliminary plan that we do. Very much. We viewed it with all the neighbors and they've signed seen this, that this is in a certain favor. You can see we simplified the design of what was posed to, to, to. Believe that's pretty much tells story of what we're trying to do.
Alright, well, thank you very much for your presentation. Um, now it's time for public comment. If anybody in the room wants anything or in or against or making comments?
We'll speak for, we'll get speak for. Um, we have a
Excuse me, if you, if our notary needs to hear you, so you have to go up here. And just yeah, sorry, and for the record, you have to indicate your name and
Yeah. So married, taught, I love the screen, like really important. There's my three children here. We, uh, the now. But we've done this meeting. All the issues is but our grandchildren, the house is small. We can't really let them share.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, there's no other comments from within the room. Is there anyone online, there's someone online, and so there comes two questions from the board. Again. Mr. Beck, sounds like he'd like to begin.
I mean, you, you understand why. But I'd like you, if you can, to explain to me how either soil condition, shade or the topography of that remains a hardship here.
When we first looked at how you in the contact. We looked at and then all of a sudden I taking portion of a very valuable part. Coming, making of basically dining room lodging. So that we can feed within all of that. That going over five hundred fifty. Go on, minimize that to the building. Addition then basically as a drop zone where people would come in and through the rear door. Big slope or free cave. Look at the right location. Both have to be able to see that. You should be the left. You can see from the parking area practices, this is all we inhabit. You get to go around lot to, to get to the building. I didn't, you have to get in the building, you just have to go oh public street, the building on the right, entering the building. The window is quite different. That's why trying to get an addition coming off of that rear window into the parking area. Having more circulation to the house. Then just, just reading that criteria. So we attempted to save within the set. But addition on the rear wouldn't allow to have more than three people sitting. So that's why we're requesting the bulk for just the yard that you don't have any other structures there. This then is the creation. Very guy on set. But the setback imposed on this neighborhood. Oh, and that's why I did the other matrix. Why all the buildings, all those, it was in all the set. Because the half size, what was imposed upon this neighborhood. So we went to topo, soil condition. I feel a lot. It is, is our argument, but even though the house is stepped out of the street, which is a non-conformant, all the houses the right, left. To find, like all the other houses, we're approaching on the right side. So what we're trying to do is reserve all the open space that we can. We're well ended. We need all the criterias for a lot cover. The only criteria that we don't need to have submission, one story. Is to add a little more rooms, more than three people in the city. And that's why we opened up floor plan, the kitchen, the dining room, to make that room feel bigger. But
I appreciate your explanation, I don't know.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I don't, I'm sorry.
Can, can I ask a question or? Okay, Mr. Chin, um, in your, uh, the matrix for the building, not for the, the neighborhood. The yeah, the rear, the rear setback thirty point four feet to twenty point eight three feet. So is that, does that include what exists currently? Or is that from the, sort of the, the main box of the house that in addition to what exists currently, or is it from the view?
Do you go to the second? It's time. Should be on to the left hand side. Actually, right down the middle, going to sustain addition.
Okay, so this to the existing addition. I understand.
There's a small dent off that position. Right with that. Where you have your you didn't count that square footage because, quite frankly, on the ground. Not one.
Yeah, okay, uh. Yeah, I don't really have any. Yeah, I don't really have any, any further questions. I mean, I guess. You know, one of the things that we have to consider here is you know, whether hardship exists, we have to, we have to find that there's hardship here. So I think you need to kind of maybe elaborate a little bit more. I know that Mr. Bennet pushed you a little bit too elaborate, but I think I'm gonna do that again.
Okay. We can go to your answer. Only on it. So the area that we're talking about is when the fireplace changes. To the left where we have staircase coming down. And then within the setback. With addition. But it made the house so awkward in terms of going for one section to the other. It gave more circulation. Not, not necessarily that provided looking addition even. Trying to keep the addition looking very similar, not looking the concept of see the couch, you see that little rectangle there?
Mm-hmm.
That's the sun.
Yeah.
Which is basically a drop awkward. The where the staircase is proposed gets us up to living level. Three people that, that are three rise. So to try to actually way committed that way, we have to that's, that's where you install that the grade of which I mean pretty staircase that coming up. Don't need that.
Yeah. Hearing what you're saying, I'm just concerned because you know, the, we have to meet this standard that Mr. Bennet your change in grade is two feet based on your own map. See elevation seventy eight point one one and then over closer to this building. Uh, the elevation is eighty point two. So you, I feel like you're overcoming an amazing amount of the population.
You know, but the convenience to come here. Um. You're trying to go from one level, you have one split level look in the house. One to have a portion central to where we want you to enter. Um, the size of the lot is because with seventy feet wide, when we went, it should be ninety and not a hundred and twelve. It's thinking it's hard to take a house needs to drive to the living space. Try to do it in a very modest way. And still have enough room for people to use it. And, and use it. Opposing my neighbors. Who everything to the price. Putting out anything in that direction. Um, that's just this property. Grounds property. Basically something to the property. So we're trying to stay in the, inside the setback. To have least impact, using all the neighbors also. And we stand back in the backyard still. We read all the other criteria.
Yeah, no, no, I agree with that, agree with that. Just that we have to meet this variance test that it's rigorous.
Yeah.
And that, that's the problem.
Today on excuse me.
Yeah, I have this one.
Oh, no. Okay. I'm sorry.
Uh, as chair, I'd be happy to you know, comment on the question if you would.
On our question, it's left. These on range. So with this addition, you know, late sixties. And if, if we, uh, I watch it. Going forward, this addition will allow us to so, so. You know.
No, I understood that. That's, sure. I don't think, I don't know. Just, I like to think that very.
Thank you. Any, any other sense of a problem?
I don't.
Anybody else?
I mean, you know, you bandied about. Fact that the addition can't go to the one. But if you picked up the entire box that you had proposed. Moved it over into the parking area, spun it around ninety degrees. It'd be inside the zoning matrix. It'd have the same size addition. And you'd actually put the entrance in the front. And you'd have no elevation change. Just like.
I agree with that.
Right. And the problem is how we take our parking space. I'll hope you didn't, you're not taking any parking space. You're taking something. I mean, that's pretty long.
That's pretty.
You could you could put four cars in there today. If you knock it down to three. You'd at least get your addition in. Because of the variance and stuff, I mean, you're really, really impinging on the you're eighteen percent of the rear lot segment. And you could take that same line, spin it around seven. Oh, you'd have to take it all the all the way to the fireman. Pull it down. Take, take about the living. With that, what we've done. And by the time we have a staircase coming down into that area. Where there's right on that property. But you're allowed to do that because you're inside the matrix. Doesn't, doesn't matter if you're, it doesn't matter if your neighbors are from the property line, you're allowed that. A little bit of run. Cause you'd be inside the zone. You extend. And you already have a step down. From the addition. You'd have the same step down.
The addition on the right hand side, you have
Well, you have two step down, right? Both, don't both of those say down? Right. So those both step down into your room. You'd have the same thing if you spun it around.
Then we have wall on the thousand going on the street. Property is in front. Just to, just
There's how far is the bear. If thirty feet from the property line, this thing sixteen feet deep. It'd still be within the it'd still have plenty of room. It'd be four or five feet away from your upside set.
Building big league building. Yeah, forty four feet.
Yep. And your building is twenty four, it's twenty four by sixteen, just flip it around. And, and the reason I'm bringing it up is it's a very high bar to jump into the variance permit, you will. Without some extreme hardship. And I agree with two feet is not a big hardship. It's mine. If it was, you know, eight feet, yes. Two feet's, that's just dirt. So, so I think that's the thing I'm struggling with is it's hard for us to say yes to this. Cause it's a, it was a special permit. Inside the envelope.
Yeah.
Would probably be outrunning. And it would even be easier if it was six or seven hundred square feet if it stayed inside the envelope. Cause it's not a variance. That, that, that's, I guess that was a question, a suggestion.
Lynn, would you like to, any questions?
Yeah, no, I have the same struggle and just to let me read it again. It says, ZBA in terms of getting a variance, need to, the ZBA needs to find that owing circumstances, excuse me, owing to circumstances remaining to the soil condition, shape or topography of such land and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance would involve a substantial hardship, financial otherwise, to petition and the desirable remedy may be granted without substantial detriment. So I don't know that, I think what all of us are saying is it's not necessarily substantially detrimental. But I'm not, I'm struggling to find where something here is unique to this lot. Um, that allows us to grant a variance. And what the hardship is, if you could build the same volume on a different area. But you just want to maintain the park. I think, I think we're, we're bound to enforce the standard. We don't get to say what the law is. We just have to enforce.
But there's two things I'm trying to remember. One, one is the giving them the one is that now we log into house often. Doesn't simply add to the rules. It's not wrong. Addition and once we move move this volume, this just the thing of use of this room to that. Basically, yeah, always little rooms. Yeah. So what we're asking is that to keep more open boundaries. The addition of the south, keeping it one story. Basically not much different. Than what's there and what's going to the four four and a half inches makes the room more useful. Reading that set. This was making the room too tight. It's reducing. But that's why we're being the solution. Because the solution of adding number two and square feet just to get to one roof of the color. The but hardship, but actually no hardship in terms of, you don't need to control. Turn why we're here. Just nice. Despite becoming the basic day, I'm the nine one one lot. Two nine one.
So your argument is that not having the fourth, the restriction and more flexibility is a substantial hardship.
Particularly if someone meeting in place and they need to get into the house easier. I don't one exception you have of stairs going into a setback. This one taking it to the left hand side to make it naturally. It takes up maybe a box in case we don't take it all over anyway. Then walking through that in right. So those are the things we looked at for smaller than that, just to get a little more room. You make a bunch of each in place. That's why the, the people who like they even mask in the background, most, most people don't ask. Look at both like here, like on the window, on the left, right side. Pretty much the way you go down. And you have places to snow now. This makes the overall function of the building neighborhood. Station. This project was followed by, by G and Lacy. Okay, um. Great. You can blow up the try and stand. Well, this parking over here. That's even up right now. Side by side. And you can also have, looks like we can have two parks. You have four. Problem with padding, which I think a lot of people have, is that the new report, most, almost every house is too close to the street. So when people want to do a condition, they're gonna come in here and ask for a um, and like yeah, and we usually rent. What's different about yours is yours, yours you're in the variance part, where you're creating a new problem in the back. To most of the law line. I'm sorry, a little hard to hear. I may have missed your responses to to my colleagues, but I think Bud said it pretty well. If you're waiting in this size room you took it, you put it over here and you twisted it, stuck it in its box, or even put it sideways, either way you want. Looks like it would fit. And I think what you said was did it be too costly inside to kind of connect it or something? Cost is not option. But we start having to go to one room to not look at another room. Become more certain issue. This is the destination. Coming sliding rooms. So the room, the room itself. Really, really went back in the couch and, you know, two chairs. Yeah. You can pull out another two chairs, people come. And then the room inside. The reason why we have two staircases one down is to be able to first of all, take this into the ground a little bit. So that we can not make any changes to the top of it. And, and secondly, to, to allowing so remove the kitchen, over in the dining room. Major renovation, but that's not what he wants to do. He wants to be able to simply have the living. He can have a stem. So moving to the side is very good to that. Basically portion of the house that and, um, the site was far more than what we have it located.
I mean, what you're proposing is, is more typical of what we approved. Somebody puts the addition on the back and you can't see it that much in the street. It's great. The problem is we're struggling here because we don't get a lot of views where somebody wants to create a new, a new problem, such a new variant, a new a new non-conformity official word. Where you now have a, you know, another setback you're missing. Uh, and it's typically, you know, somebody's on a really slow piece of land or it's swampy or it's, uh, or if it's a, you know, pie shaped lot or something.
It's a lot. A lot of small square lots.
No, I understand. But so it's very typical of the neighborhood.
It's more of a
and we're struggling to see, well, if it was very different than the rest of the neighborhood, that, that would be something we could hang or hang on, but it's a square lot like everybody else. So I don't, you know, I, I don't want to go round and round the same So I don't, you know, I, I don't want to go round and round the same things. I mean, it's, I don't really have any other questions. I think my colleagues have all rolled it the same thing. Um, and it's, um, I understand why you want to have a room. Sixteen feet deep. I wish my. My family room was sixteen feet deep, um, but it approaches in that, in the variance area and it puts us in a, in a.
Uh. Only other thing on, on. Is it just, this photograph. Just on Google. Um. The way to. See all the other houses. In rear park. To look at the other city map. Everybody built right on. Yeah, that's the one house in condition. That preserve that. Open space. And we just want a little piece of something.
Yeah. In the neighborhood today, I noticed that there are several of the houses that are old. You're asking for. I think what's happened is new brickwork has become a really desirable place to live. People are, you know, there's so much development pressure right now that, that, that. People are, um, not. Not as it was twenty years ago as far as allowing people to go deeply all over the place, or else they'd be, we'd just fill the town up, right? With so much. You know, it's become so valuable. For developers, um. So it's so, so we have a tough time staying within the variance right area, particularly in a situation like this where there is a big area for left. Um. So it's, I understand it's, it's, you might, you maybe like the left better. But, um. From our point of view, it's not, it's not like it's impossible. Uh.
And with the old too. Also made. Old. It made, made it look more congested. I think reading criteria, but this adjustment, I mean, we named it. To get, to get ten feet, when you don't have. All the way. We can take up very much space. So context to. The only. Concept we're trying to remember. By asking for the second side of the room. Minimize the amount of. Still, but. And then we're not. Creating that wall. That's all it is. Is having the open space, which I think. The dwelling here. You have an open space. Square footage. And the only. On that public block. You can go in there. But now you're. You're basically having to. Wind. From that night. On the street.
Well, I, I have no other question. So. We are. Now, yeah, not part of hearing, and we get to deliberations. Members. Here, what we can. Whether they can support this variance application and state the, um, criteria on, in the law that we have to follow. Would like to begin.
I guess I'll do. Um. So I think, you know. Tough. To me, the forefront test based on the argument that, that you submitted to us. Uh, I think you have a much better argument for a special permit with a slightly reconfigured plan. Uh. In fact, I think you, you know, you're gonna get. But I think at this variance. The argument for what you're asking for just isn't there. Me, um, I just think it's, this is a really difficult one because. You're asking to go further back into the, the. The rear setback. What is. allowable under zoning currently, uh, you know. Stand that the neighbors have these houses that have that. Maybe it was made in nineteen eighty, maybe it was made in nineteen ten. Uh. But it's different now, and we're here now. So you, what you're asking us to do is to, to waive the rule. Based on certain set of criteria, but you haven't really made a good argument for that criteria. As I see it. So that's sort of where I.
Would like to go next.
Oh, oh.
I have to agree. On. Yeah, starting proposition that variance is a relative space. Fairly exercise. Circumstances when this rigger's. You know what it is, so when I parse the language of that requirement. Whether there's. Soil conditions, shade. Or topography of the land or structure. I find none of those here. Even if I did. I can't get to the point where. Your request to design. An enlarged family room, which may be more convenient or advantageous to you. As opposed to some other. Options does not mean in any way, in my view, to be part of. This is, I understand the human side of it. We all do. We feel for that. Uh. However, I, I feel. Following. Law. In the ordinance. Judicial. Speculated. Gives a very little room. Uh, to grant this variance.
It's a share.
Yeah, I, I have to agree. I'm looking at four prompt tests. First one is, you know, circumstances you need to align. I don't think. From our discussions, there's anything you need to your law. Allows to. To make that one of the hurdles. Strict application of this provision would deprive the applicant reasonable use of the law. I don't think that does that either. I think. It would be a solution where you might be able to do it with special permit. Wouldn't be probably as. You know, good a design as you have today, but it would fit. Unique conditions and circumstances are not a result of your actions. So you've got one of the three. Four bullets. And the last one, I think, is the other reason we have a hard time granting relief is relief in my constitution. Grant that. Inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties. I think we would be giving you a special privilege for granting you. So if one of the neighbors came in and tried the same thing. Run into the same hurdles. You probably wouldn't agree. Uh, so with that said, I don't think I can support the application as it's submitted.
And unfortunately, I would have to look at this box. It's a very strict test, and we just don't need the criteria, even though I understand that. It may be better. Addition in the back. It's just, it, it encroaches into that setback and we can't, we're not permitted to. But it would not be with that.
I, I can currently follow my colleagues' points. Which I agree with. I can't support this. I indicated if we were to load them. Slow it down. Then. You might be restricted for a couple of years to doing something. You may want to continue, um, with. If you would drop it off, prejudice, just continue, continue in this. Uh, and submit a special permit, something different. Uh, but I, I don't. Yeah.
I don't. Oh. Could you explain to me if I don't draw a note? No. Continue. Change that dimension. Of six, but permanent.
Yeah, you could continue, and then maybe as you submit your. Nonconforming application, you could also submit a request. At the same meeting, just do your own actions.
My mind was meeting. Can you make a change?
You'd be fine for a new application.
So. Draw. Basically, it's like, like, wait. If you're asking for continuous. Yeah. Talk about playing for long?
Sure.
I'm. It's very. I'm gonna have to make this. All day. So. Yeah. 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 Would like to do a research. Gonna take way too long. And.
I don't think it, that's a good choice. Starting. Um, sorry, so. We need a motion from one of our.
Yeah.
Members. Who would like to make a motion?
Well, move that. It will. Day. I have one here. Oh, I love it. West for variance two. Do you have a date? Yes. No, it's. Two seconds. I'll say.
So. I guess we'll just put down the line here. This was a while.
Yes.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Should I go?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do understand. Plus. I like the addition. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, the next topic is that I'm succeeding, the approval of minutes of May fourteen. Leave people other chance to see those.
It was a bit. Ten pages.
Yeah, it was late, was, we got back to late.
It took a long time to read, like. You're done good.
Did you have any changes?
I did. All right.
I returned to, I, I didn't see anything. It's all done.
Yeah, very well.
It's always.
Yeah.
Lucky to have our note taken. Um. We get a motion to approve that, man. So who? Is there a second? All right. All in favor, just say aye. Okay, now it's time for updates from the chair or the planning director. This vice chair. Planning director.
Um, nothing more.
Nothing, okay. I think once you just shared with people that. Is there a next meeting? That's, yeah. We have a jam to next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a pretty large in a next meeting.
How many items?
Uh, there's five items. Um. With two have been attached to them. Two, I think, um, investor. Uh, market applications and also in, in law. And, uh, renewal. Being general business, so. End up. But I think. Any bigger than the one you had.
That came also. A lot of parents stop them. Sure, and I could be here in two years.
Date.
Then two, two eleven.
Oh, I'm. Sorry. To feel.
Good to know with a big meeting. I may not be available.
So we need to get all the other platform. Um. The other, I just, the other thing I just want to mention is that, um, the gas station thing on the corner of High Street and State Street, by the circle. Um. It's a.
Maybe it'll just be in this afternoon. Be maybe sometime in the June or beginning of July.
All right, second June meeting or first July meeting. All right, if anything else, so I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Hopefully we can just.
All right.
All right. It's pretty good.
Pretty good, yeah.
Really, really well. That was a tough last topic.
Yeah.